Yes. Welcome to the annual, uh, May 28th, 2024 Board of Education meeting. The first order of business is to approve the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Right.
Okay, the next thing on the menu is to approve the minutes from the May 22nd, 2024 meeting. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Sir.
All in favor?
Alright.
Board members, I have listed for you a number of recognitions that are student recognitions in the arts and athletics and some in academics, a personal finance challenge. And then we have a number of teacher recognitions I wanted you to be aware of. We didn't invite these groups today because school is out to try to create conflicts for families to have to be here, but I wanted to make sure you saw this, so just a lot of great accomplishments this year for our teachers and students. And we'll highlight this in the newsletter we do this summer with the city. Alright, we'll leave a financial statement, Courtney.
Good afternoon, board members. I've provided the April 30th, 2024 financial statements in check register for your review. As of April 30th, 2024, we have collected 105.2% of our budgeted add-on tax revenues compared to the 97.7% we received last year at this date. In April, we earned $167,477 in interest income on our investment in treasury sweep and our total expenditures and transfers out in the general fund as of April 30th were 61% of the budget compared to 63% last year. For the seventh month of our fiscal year, with all things being equal, we should be at 58.3% of our budgeted expenditures. We are a little above that due to payments for some annual expenditures and early lease payoff. Monthly financial statements in check registers are available for viewing on our website upon board approval and all bank accounts have been reconciled as of April 30th, 2024.
One thing I will point out on the interest statement that we've got from the sweep account is what we've approved since we started. Those accounts, Courtney, when did we open?
July 2023.
July 2023. And to date, we have earned how much interest?
$980,000.
That's fantastic. Yeah, very, very good job. Thank you, Courtney. I recommend approval of the financial statement for April 24.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation to approve the financial statement for April 2024. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Under consent items, I recommend the board approve the consent item for a theater trip, the St. Abbot Hills High School Theater Department, had a state overnight field trip for February 2025.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation to approve the overnight field trip for the theater department in February 2025. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Alright, under business, item A is our salary schedule for 2024-25, and I recommend the board approve the salary schedule for the 2024-25 school year.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation to approve the salary schedule for the 2024-25 school year. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I would like to comment on this. We started last summer with a study on our salary schedules, all of our schedules, to determine what steps we needed to make and it was appropriate to do that. The main objective of this was to make sure we got a salary schedule that was competitive and would be a place where people want it to be and deserved to be paid at an amount commensurate with their work. And we never wanted to be a reason people would leave the system, but we knew last summer that we had to make some adjustments when the opportunity presented itself. And so we've gone through that exercise this year and go into make some adjustments. And tonight's recommendation is based on the study that we did, high-to-looking competitive structures with compensation. I want to note that all employees in the district will get a 2% salary increase. That is a stated increase, but in addition to that, for teachers, I want to talk about it for a moment, we're going to add an additional 2% for bachelor's degree teachers. We're going to add an additional 3% for masters, EDS, and doctorate. And those teachers who are in those salary schedules, some may have additional raises depending on what step they were in, because we were not aligned very well with, like I said, some will be competing school systems. So, bachelors is the 2% state plus 2% local, and for EDS, masters, doctorate is 2% state plus 3% for local. In addition, we have added some additional pay for custodians, I believe we have that at 4% total. We have, for child nutrition program, we have added a significant raise for those who work in the kitchen and for assistant managers, and we made a structure to changes for the child nutrition program managers, all resulting in raises. Our extended day program, we are adding a 5% increase for our managers and EDP and also hourly increases for employees that work EDP program. We are also adding administrative for EDS or administrators, we will add a little bit of incentive paid for that as well. We already pay for doctorate, but we do not pay for EDS. So those are the changes that we have put in place and are showing up on the schedule. I'll entertain questions you have.
Y'all are so deserving. We're so excited to be able to do this, so congratulations. Is it all in favor?
Alright.
Item B, I recommend the board approve the contract with Jennifer Brown for instructional support administrator mentoring for the 24-25 school year.
You heard the superintendent's recommendation to approve the contract with Jennifer Brown for instructional support and administrator mentoring for the 2024-25 school year. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Well, board member Jennifer Brown has been assistant principal at our school for a number of years, was Alabama teacher a year several years ago, fantastic administrator, fantastic instructional person, and we want to continue to utilize her services. She's retired effective July 1, and so this contract allows us to have her supporting teachers and administrators. Specifically, we'll have her working with teachers we're supporting for national, co- national board certification. She'll be working with our new instructional partners and she'll be working with our assistant principals. So looking forward to her expertise and staying a part of our team.
All in favor?
Item C, I recommend the board approve bid for lawn maintenance.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation to approve the bid for lawn maintenance. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's had two bids for that contract. We've worked with both before in years past. It's a contract that can go up to three years, but it's a year-to-year contract.
All in favor?
Alright.
Alright, item D is the contracts. I recommend the board approve the contract for lawn maintenance.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation to approve the contract for lawn maintenance. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Item E, I recommend the board approve amendment to the contract for purchase of St. Abbot Hills Elementary Central.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation to approve the amendment to the contract for the purchase of St. Abbot Hills Elementary Central. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Anything on this?
Yeah, we have had a contract in place for the purchase of Central for quite some time. We have, as part of the buyer's agreement, that they can get it at 90 days additional due diligence, and they've asked for that. What they've asked for is to weigh the additional earnest money as part of that. I'm very comfortable doing it. I know to date, they have invested between $100,000 and $125,000 capital in just preparing for the purchase of it, so I know that they're invested, and I think this is, I think this is a reasonable request.
All in favor?
Item F, I recommend the board approve the amendment to architectural agreement for designing parking improvements at St. Abbot Hills High School.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation to approve the change order for the turf project at St. Abbot Hills High School. F? Oh, I'm sorry. I was talking quite along. Okay, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation to approve the amendment to the architectural agreement for designing parking improvements at St. Abbot Hills High School. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
I may just point out to you on this, board members, the area that we're talking about a design on is where the alternative schoolhouse is sitting now. We vacate that area, be able to clear it and add some additional parking. We have enough parking for juniors and seniors next year. The high school's done a good job being creative with that, but we know that we're going to need some additional parking. This will be funded through state buyers. Not through local capital dollars, but it'll be through some state supplemental grants that we'll be receiving next year. Item G, I recommend the board approve change order one for build turf project at St. Abbot Hills High School.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation to approve change order one for turf project at St. Abbot Hills High School. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Board members, this is an amendment to a contract we have for the summer that the city is paying for. As you'll remember, we have a shared use agreement with the city. They offered over a three-year period of time to contribute $3.2 billion to improving those shared facilities. This is one of them, so this is a funded project from the city. And what we're doing is upgrading the type turf we're using and also taking the warranty period from eight years to 12 years. So good investment.
All in favor?
Item H, recommend, I recommend that we approve the architectural agreement for designing bathroom concession building improvements at St. Abbot Hills High School baseball field.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation to approve the architectural agreement for designing bathroom and concession building improvements at St. Abbot Hills High School baseball field. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussions on this?
Yeah, this is another one of the projects that will be funded through the city and the shared uses agreement. It's not scheduled at this point because there's some private fundraising that will have to accompany this in order to get the project done, but once it's in place, we're able to be, we can do it, likely next fiscal year, but again, it will be city funded. I just want to note on all three that we talked about, these are funds not coming from local dollars, because we're not in a position to do this type of work at this point, but we're fortunate to have some dollars from the state and in this case, the city.
All in favor? Okay, so the next item is to go over our CFO's contract. And we just wanted to say what an honor it is that not only we get to do the teacher's salaries at this meeting, but we get to honor Courtney as well and get her contract updated. She just does a tremendous job, day in and day out, keeping our financial records in good standing. She's always eager to meet with the board of ed to answer any questions or concerns. She's been a lifelong learner. She just recently got her certifications on something that I don't even know exactly what it is, because I could not do it, but we were so proud of her. We did not require it. She just took the initiative to go do it on her own. We were so proud. She's just a professional and an expert in her field, and we appreciate you and your loyalty to us, and it was just a blessing that we were able to do this for you. So congratulations. Anybody else?
Courtney does a wonderful job, and as Frank mentioned earlier, through her initiative, we've got an extra $98,000 of the last year just by setting up the sweep account just by, through your creativity and understanding of what was going on with the interest markets. That's been a huge help, so we appreciate all of you and your willingness to ensure answered questions, which seem very basic to you. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Courtney.
Alright, so, next, do we have a, do we have a, do we have a motion to approve Courtney's contract?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay. And the next item is the superintendent's contract. And we have, we're firing now. Just kidding. It's a great honor and privilege to update Dr. Fring's contract today. Thank you for that. He is a, in my mind, just such a blessing to our community. He's one of the hardest-working men I know, and anyone that works for our system will tell you that. He prides himself in raising up leaders and helping them find their calling and brings out their gifts so they can enhance our system better than anyone I've ever seen. It's just incredible to watch him. He works truly tirelessly at finding ways to make things come to fruition. Where most people see a red light, like he sees it as an opportunity, and he has a sense of urgency and sees the big picture. A doesn't work, he has a backup plan and then another backup plan. And it's just amazing to watch him in action. He does what's right when no one's looking. I think that's one of his greatest traits. And by being with him for five years, I've just learned so much about being a leader, and I just appreciate you, your service and your dedication to us. It's, all I can say is just your excellence is amazing, and words don't really adequately express how I feel towards you and what you do for us, but thank you. And it's just a gift we get to do this for you as well, so thank you.
So Dr. Fring, we're very pleased to do this, to bring your contract in line. Way behind with some of the other systems that we're doing, and so we're glad to be able to bring you back into proper alignment. As I've mentioned many times, I've had the privilege to speak with people who go throughout the state to train system and district administrators. Every time I mention that, my kids go to St. Abbot Hills, and so you have the best leadership in the state here, and my experience is impressive. Thank you, we're pleased you're with us and you'll be with us when we proceed.
Echo what Todd said, excuse me, Scott said about Todd. Superintendents in surrounding communities, both current and past, just repeatedly told us how fortunate we are, and I couldn't compare more, and we just appreciate your service thus far and for many years to come.
I'm very thankful to know you both, this setting and know you as a friend, but I'm just very thankful for you. Those that know you are very thankful for you as well.
Thank you.
Alright, so do we have a motion to approve the superintendent's contract?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Alright, so the next thing is we need to select a president for the 2024-2025 school year. I will entertain a motion to nominate a president for the 2024-2025 school year.
I would like to move to nominate Scott Brown as president of the St. Abbot Hills School Board. Scott is known to me a long, long time, and he's just a person I look up to professionally as a friend, but then as far as his mind, his discernment, and he's just an exceptional leader, so well thought of in the legal community, and I would be very fortunate that he would serve as our board president.
Well, Scott, do we have a motion to approve Scott Brown as our president for the 2024-2025 school year?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Congrats, Scott. Next, we need to select a vice president for the 2024-2025 school year. I will entertain a motion to nominate a vice president for the 2024-2025 school year.
I would like to move to nominate Jay Stewart for vice president of the board for 2024-2025 school year.
Do I have a motion to approve Jay Stewart as our vice president for the 2024-2025 school year?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Next is the Board of Education meeting calendar for the 2024-2025 school year. We need to get that approved. Do we, I have a motion to approve that calendar for the 2024-2025 school year?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Alright, now I will entertain a motion for the Board of Education members to forego any compensation for the 2024-2025 school year. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Board members, item A is personnel, and I recommend the board approve the personnel actions as submitted.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation to approve the personnel items submitted. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
So moved.
All in favor?
Board members, I do not have an administrative report. I would like to exercise a moment of privilege here and introduce Amber Teraquitas to us. Amber's in the back, and she is the board member that will be stepping in when Jacqueline exits this month and first meeting in June. So Amber, welcome aboard. Glad to have you here tonight.
Alright, so we will move on to our public comment time. The individual desiring to speak shall stand and give his or her name and their address. The presentation should be as brief as possible, and in no event shall such address exceed three minutes. The speaker may make statements about their particular concern with school operations and programs. In public session, however, the board will not hear personnel complaints against particular school personnel or against any person connected with the school system. Other means are provided whereby the board may consider and dispose of legitimate complaints involving individuals and employees within the school system. Further, the board does not typically respond to comments during public participation. We did have a sign-up sheet just to keep it a little more organized than our last meeting, so we're just going to go through the list, and if you signed up, I'll just call you, and if you can just come up, if you sign the register, that would be great. And the first one was Laura Johnson.
So my name is Laura Johnson, and I dress the 2605 formal place. And I want to say really clearly, I'm not fighting St. Abbot Hills schools, I'm fighting four St. Abbot Hills schools. On August 23rd, 2023, I received a call from my daughter, Emigreys Johnson, special education teacher at Dolly Ridge. Teacher was out for training, but asked me to bring a change of clothes because Emigreys had wet clothes. When I got there, she was sitting in a closet-sized room with padding covering the walls and the door and a wet pad on the floor. Emigreys said, "Momma, use your magic to make a door to get me out of here." Turns out, my child had taken off her clothes and urinated in the floor in an attempt to get out of the padded cell she was being held in all alone. The teacher contacted me after her training and said that she had learned that very day that having a door closed on children alone is illegal and would never let it happen again. I read the article by Trish Crane last summer on seclusion and restraint in Alabama schools, so I knew it was illegal. Central administration knew about the school policy. After an IEP meeting, the Director of Exceptional Education went to the special ed classroom where my daughter was being held in a padded cell. She did not offer to get more support or say, "We can't put children alone in here." Instead, she offered her assistance in holding the door closed where my child was trapped inside. It gets worse. The teacher was told by school administration when she started this at Dolly Ridge that this is what they do. Parents, teachers, and aides had been begging for help because the class was dangerously understaffed and there was no support or training, there was no training. Instead of getting support or training, the principal bought a strap like this. He brought it into the special education classroom and instructed the staff to hold the door closed, put one end on the doorknob, and pull with the other side so that our children could not get out if they were stronger than the staff member who was holding the door closed. When the teacher told the administration, the administrator of the school, that she learned the practice was illegal, he said, "Put it in the children's behavior plans and do it anyway." My child, a child of trauma and abuse and neglect, urinated on the floor to get away from an illegal policy that was implemented for children with disabilities, and the head of our school said, "Do it anyway." Her teacher quit shortly after that. No additional support or training was offered when the teacher said this policy was illegal, nor was it offered when I told them I knew about the policy. Only when I said I knew this policy was illegal did I get an email saying that we would get additional support in the classroom that we so desperately needed. My child received a behavior aide who is now essentially the main reason why my daughter is willing to go to school. Since then, my child will no longer sleep alone at night. She cannot be alone at all, essentially, and for the months, she would pinch the door of the She cannot be alone at all, essentially, and for the months, she would clutch the door of the car or hide in the back of my car as we would pull up to school because she didn't want to go. We've been working for years to help her work through issues of abuse and neglect and abandonment, only to have it undone because of an illegal policy that was implemented against the children with disabilities in our school and because the school wouldn't get enough training or support for our special ed classroom. This is Bestavia, where the goal is for everyone to learn without limits. Unless you're in special education at Dolly Ridge, where they put a heavy-duty lifting strap on the door and hold you in. My child deserves to go to a school where she is safe, and the teachers deserve to work in a school where they have the support and training that they need to do their best. The cost to get a safe classroom has been too high, and my child and her classmates and the teachers have paid dearly for it. Is this what you would want for your child? If it's not, please don't sit back. Do something to help, because this is the reality for children with disabilities in Bestavia right now. And as Dr. Seuss said in The Lorax, unless someone like you lives a whole awful life, it's not going to get better. It's not.
And next, we have Julianne. Julianne?
So I have three beautiful kids, and some of you guys here taught some of them. One of them's 16, about to be 17. She drives, she's responsible. I have a running year old, and then I have a nine-year-old, and none of them go to Bestavia Hills. None of them. They used to. They used to have really great teachers here at Bestavia Hills, but not a single one of them gets to go here now. When we left, it was because of the masking. We have family that are surgeons or nephrologists and, you know, just really couldn't be around sick people, and they were going to lock themselves in for the entire COVID. And we did not want to be without them, so we did homeschool. And then we pulled ours and went into private school. So now we live in Bestavia, and we pay the same taxes, but we also pay for private school. And I see all these great fields, and I see all these great theater performances. And everybody here at Bestavia complains that the theater is not as great as it, but it really is great. And the teachers here really are amazing. But imagine me thinking about my two youngest and feeling bad that they don't have these very qualified, highly esteemed teachers, even though we're paying the same taxes, and they shouldn't be able to go to school there. And I'm considering bringing them back because Lauren Dressback is the new principal at Kahaba High, and my kids will be going. Imagine if I had brought them back. Mommy's friend gets walked out of the building. Mommy, what's wrong with your friend Lauren? The same person that I sat in church with. Look, too many things keep happening here under Todd Freeman. And I want to bring my kids back to Bestavia. I don't think it's fair that my friends have left this system. We were raised here. I don't know where you came from. Maybe Silicon Valley? I'm not quite sure. But where we come from, we all stand behind each other. And that's the only reason why I'm here, is because Lauren entered my classroom in fifth grade from Opelika. She didn't get Mr. Mack, she didn't get the great teacher everybody loved. She got Ms. Garrett, like me, and she kind of cried her way through fifth grade because we had to watch Mr. McKay's class go off and have fun while we sat inside and did nothing. And Lauren experienced that and what it would be like. And that's why she was a good principal. She was from Bestavia. She came in a little late, so she knows what she got. She knows how great this place is. She also knows how alienating and how backstabbing it can be. It's incredible to think that somebody who is so much Bestavia, people actually think of, Lauren Dressback, when they think of, "What is Bestavia?" And you're kicking her ass. And Todd Freeman, I don't know where you came from, but it's not funny. I kept...
Lauren, tell it to her.
All right, I see a lot of support for the board here, and I get it. I support the board too. But I won't do it blindly, and I don't think any of you should either. This room is full of current, former, and former Bestavia residents, teachers, and students. And there are a lot more outside who are not allowed in. They're here because we've seen a pattern of running through administrators in this community. We aren't the ones giving Bestavia a bad name. Bestavia is better than this. Bestavia deserves better than this. That's why we're here. I am curious what all of you know that we don't know, because apparently you've been given information that has helped you to feel as though this is justified.
Exactly.
A legacy teacher who, up until this point, had an impeccable record as a student, a teacher, and an administrator. Someone who progressively worked their way up the ladder, accolade after accolade. Contract extended six months prior, never had a complaint or been disciplined prior to this. Someone like that knows what is and isn't appropriate in the workplace. Twenty-year career. If they have enough information to be okay with a person like that being demoted, then either they know something we don't know, or they have a really strong amount of blind institutional trust. And a board who did not discipline the people responsible for what we just heard happen to Immigreys. Let's talk about that situation for a second because the discrepancy in treatment alone proves your discrimination, Mr. Freeman. Todd and Lauren both had complaints filed against them, correct? Todd was not removed from his position. He was given the luxury of an outside investigation. He was allowed to participate in. Private investigator hired by his boss. And behind closed doors, despite video evidence, no wrongdoing was found. Lauren also had a complaint filed against her, so I would assume the same protocol would be followed. It wasn't. Lauren was pulled into a meeting, escorted off campus, and banned from school property the very same day. Her coworkers were interrogated without her present. She was never given a chance to defend herself against any accusations, and she had to ask permission to attend her son's track meet and still has not been allowed to return for her belongings. She spent six weeks patiently waiting for answers before Carl and I went public with her story. During that time, her name was dragged through the mud. All of which, all of the accusations have appeared in my comments. Let me just read one for you. But if you aren't going to believe it, you aren't, these people have terrible grammar. You aren't going to believe it until you see the topless video of her and her girlfriend making out that she showed to the janitor. Do not let them pull you. Their silence does not and will not benefit Lauren in any way. She is perfectly willing to tell her story, but she can't because she is still employed. She needs her job. She needs a paycheck. She has a family to feed. You've treated this like a lateral transfer to keep her quiet, haven't you? If she had done something egregious, you would have fired her, but you didn't. I'm not the one giving Bestavia a bad name. The truth will come out. It's going to be very embarrassing for this community, and it's going to be yet another costly lawsuit that Todd Freeman will once again have to settle. This is just one of the many he's gotten you involved in with his preferential treatment of administrators. And he's using money that should be going to your kids' educations to pay for his own mistakes, and none of you should be okay with that. You all deserve answers as to why this keeps happening. Hold them accountable for those answers. This is not against you, the board. I don't know if y'all know what all is happening, but Mr. Freeman, you certainly do.
James Butts?
Good afternoon, Madam President. My name is James Butts. I'm a labor, employment, and administrative attorney here in the city. And I'm coming to you today because a lot of your neighbors in this county are very concerned about the Bestavia Hills City School System. Your system has not always had the best reputation in this county, but you've worked very hard to try and address that. Sadly, the last couple of months, you've jeopardized that to the point where an active conversation is having to be had about whether or not we need to involve our county government in resolving, in cleaning house, and fixing your problems, which, if those of you know the Bulking and the Belated Duty statutes for Alabama Boards of Education, particularly the ones implementing Article 174 of the state constitution, it's not a fun thing to do. However, because of your, the Board's rather dubious behavior regarding its Title VII compliance, particularly, we are feeling maybe necessary because your students are not safe in this district. You have one of the best principals in Alabama, and you treat her in a way where if she was my client, I'd be shopping for house renovations for my mother because I would know just how rich I was about to be. And this is very concerning to all of us because, as, Madam President, you talked about your superintendent being right because he supposedly does the right thing when no one's looking. Well, if this is how he behaves when we are looking, when all of Birmingham, and all of Hoover, and all of Homewood, and all of Mountain Brook, and everyone who decides if someone should be encouraged to move into this city or into one of our cities, then we're really concerned about whether or not we need to get our circuit court involved and do something because this is dangerous. You have a lot of very vulnerable children in your care. And if you're not prepared to protect your beloved staffers from dubious behavior, how can any of us in this county trust you with children who have those same needs? Please, we have no desire to drag whole Bestavians through this, but if you force the hands of this community, we will protect your children. Thank you very much.
Mr. Wizzenhut?
Well, I had all these notes. I didn't have them before, and I know they won't answer questions and they won't comment, but I'm telling you, the three people up here before me just, I don't need to deep this anymore. They made the case so strongly. I would like to say, and I know all of you in the blue, because there were a bunch of us in green last time, and a lot of them were being held out, are well-intentioned people. But if you're just supporting Dr. Freeman as he sits there and won't even answer questions and won't tell us why Ms. Dressback was transferred and won't tell us why he won't at least email back Ms. Johnson, the mother of the special needs child, then you are blindly following someone for whatever reason I don't know. So that's all I'll say there. Can I confirm a couple of things? Bestavia, can you at least confirm something? I'm not saying to answer questions. Bestavia Hills High School is on Lime Rock, and the enrollment's about 1,600? Copex Elementary is on Dolly Ridge Road. It's about 500? Roughly, about seven. Okay, same with Dolly Ridge. There's some aggression. Where is the alternative school building? Building, the high school. It's in Bestavia High School. Here's a classroom. It's a downstairs classroom, okay? And approximately how many are typically not enrolled or put are in that class? You don't, you're the superintendent of the school system. You didn't say you wouldn't answer. You said you didn't know the answer to how many typically are in the alternative school class. You need to find that out because I'm sure it's less than 500, 700, and 1,600. And that's where you transferred a woman that was in charge at a prestigious school of 500 to 700 people, okay? And I know why she was. It's because she came out, you extended her contract, and she was a prime example of the perfect principal. Then she said she was gay, and in Bestavia, with certain people, man, that is a death warrant on your career and your social standing. Then she had, it was a black one, and boy, that makes it even worse. Does she even have an office? She's a principal. Of course, y'all paying your money. I don't even know if she has an office. You're keeping the reason hidden. You won't even lie about it. I'll be asked questions. I can't even get you to lie about it, much less tell us the truth. You're scared, this goes for Ms. Johnson as well. You're scared to say why you have the gall to extend a contract of a man who mockingly treated a disabled child. I know you're not supposed to use that word. A special needs child. Spread the video around, had a sham of investigation. Your friend was the guy you hired, okay? You're scared group of adults right here because the board members are going along with you. You're scared to answer questions because if you told the truth, you'd face some severe consequences. And I don't think not answering the questions, and I would ask you people that are supporting, see me afterwards and tell me why you're supporting the Board and Dr. Freeman not answering any of our concerns. You're saying they're doing the right thing by not answering questions, so I agree with the lady before. You got to know something we don't know, and if you do, you should be sharing it.
How many lawsuits is it going to pay before y'all rip?
Well, that's all we have for tonight. Thank you all for coming. Our meeting is adjourned.